Good evening and welcome to the Smyrna Town Council Workshop to set our agenda for the June council meeting. Before we move into our items for discussion, I'm going to ask Mark Adkins to do our prayer, and Tim, if you will, do our pledge, please, if you'll stand with me.
Father, we come to you today just thankful for all the things that you give us and bless us with in our lives. Father, we thank you for a beautiful town to live in to call our home. Lord, today we especially want to say a thankful, heartfelt thanks to the Memorial Day holiday that just passed, Father, and those that have sacrificed their lives, their families as well, that have served our country. And, Lord, we just pray your blessings upon those that are now gone but gave the ultimate sacrifice so that we might enjoy this freedom tonight. Lord, we also pray for the deputy sheriff in Dixon, Father, that was shot and killed in the line of duty. Go with us now and continue to watch over our police and fire departments here locally and those across the country and across the nation, our employees who do such an amazing job each and every day as they work out in the field to make this of the great town that it is. Go with us and bless us. We ask it in your name. Amen.
If you would, face the flag with me. The pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, into a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks, Mark and Tim. So we will move into our items for discussion. The first item is consideration of an ordinance relative to the rezoning of properties located on tax map 270 Group C, parcels 1.00, 2.00, and 4.00 containing approximately 1.06 acres. It's requested by Howard Spain to go from PNO 1 to C4. The properties are located at 409, 413, and 415 Enon Springs Road East, and this is a second reading. Mitch, you're up.
Mayor and Council, this is a rezoning request for three pieces separate tracts of land on Enon Springs Road across from Cowlstone Lane and the Cowlstone subdivision. Land use plan would support a mix of office, retail, multifamily development in this area. Surrounding zoning consists of R2, R6, PNO 1, C2, and C4. C4 property in the middle was rezoned approximately a year ago, and this is just following suit with that previous rezoning. And this was approved by planning commission with 4, 4, and 0 against, and it was also approved unanimously last town council meeting.
Okay. Anybody have questions for Mitch on this? Okay, we'll put that on the agenda and move on to item two, which is consideration of an ordinance adopting the budget for the fiscal year 2018, 2019, and it is a second reading. Rex.
Mayor and Council, the ordinance and detailed budget for fiscal year 2018 and 19 are submitted for your consideration. I've attached the changes from first read to second read spreadsheet for your convenience. It details the budget changes from what was presented at the first reading.
Um, are you have more?
You want me to hit a couple of the bigger ones or changes? Any questions on?
It's second reading. Do you all need him to hit the?
I don't understand.
No? Okay, I think we're good. Any questions for Rex on this?
I just had a comment from Scott Burden's article in the D and J, and I've had a couple of people ask too. So the property that we discussed in the budget meetings, we were like looking for land, and the D and J article stated that it is out on Jefferson Pike that we're looking. Is that?
Talking about for a?
For fire, sorry, for a fire station.
Well, it was all contingent upon us acquiring, you know, expanding Jefferson Pike. So, yeah, we've had multiple discussions. We've talked about asking people to donate property, to seek out property for purchase, but I think it's a moot point until we know that that road is going to be developed because we may need to put a fire station somewhere else in lieu of out there, and a fire station and all the equipment and the personnel is just tremendously expensive. So I think we're just good to hold off on doing anything out there.
And I think probably since you gave comment about that article, we found the bid lettings been pushed back a whole nother year, which somewhat changes all of that. Because bid letting was, we were in hopes that it was going to be December of this year, and now they've pushed it back to December of 19 at this point.
Okay. I just, I wasn't aware. I hadn't heard, and so I didn't know if you were where he had gotten the information that it was on Jefferson Pike.
Well, I will tell you this, we were about to ramp up our efforts had they gone out for bid in December, but it's kind of unnecessary to have.
Now, okay.
Any other questions or comments? Then we will move to item three, which is consideration of an ordinance adopting the property tax rate for the fiscal year 2018, 2019, and this is a second reading, and I know it's changed since our first reading.
Yes, ma'am, it's a better number.
It is.
The tax rate ordinance establishes the property tax rate for fiscal year 18 and 19. Our recommendation is to adopt the certified tax rate since this is a reappraisal year. The certified tax rate is 70.07 cents. This is a revenue neutral concept in total. The town should receive around 10.5 million this year in property taxes, and the total for next year should be approximately 10.5 million. However, individual's tax could be the same. It could be lower or higher depending upon the increase in the appraised value. There's a link on our website that goes into detail explaining the certified tax rate for anybody that wants to drill down a little deeper.
So the tax rate, so that it's revenue neutral, it's going from 88 cents to?
Eighty-eight four to seven zero zero seven.
Got it. So, not bad.
To keep your revenue.
Correct. Correct. Okay, questions for Rex on this? Then we'll move on to item four, which is approval of terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute a renewal contract with Kirkland's Pest Control relative to the Pest Control Service. Rex.
Yes, ma'am, this is just a renewal. We've had this, been under contract with Kirkland's for three years, and we'd like to extend the second one-year renewal term.
Okay. Questions for Rex on this? Move on to item five. We have quite a few renewal contracts on this agenda. This one is an approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute a renewal contract with Red Wing Shoes relative to safety footwear.
Basically, when it says safety, we're talking about steel-toed shoes, and this is also a renewal, and we'd like to extend the second one-year term with Red Wing.
Questions for Rex on this contract?
So if this one, we still have another one year after this? It's a one-year with a two-year option, and this is a one-year extension?
Should be three years. This may be the last one.
Okay, just curious. Okay, thank you.
Okay, we will move on to item six, which is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute a contract with diversified inspections relative to the fire department ground ladder and aerial device testing. Chief?
Mayor and Council, we went to bid on, for our testing, and diversified came in. Well, actually diversified was the only bidder, but we'd like to ask council to give the mayor permission to sign the contract, let them do our aerial and ground ladder testing.
Questions for chief on this? Then we will put that item on the agenda. We'll move to item seven, which is the approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute a contract with Pi Barker relative to the fire department fire extinguisher service.
Again, this is an annual contract that we had to go out to bid this year on. Pi Barker did win it, and we'd again like to ask the council to give mayor permission to sign the contract.
Questions for chief on this one? Item nine is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute a renewal contract with Anderson Yards relative to the mowing for the building safety department.
Number eight.
Oh, sorry. Did I, I'm sorry, I was getting ahead of myself. Thanks, Ms. Diane. Approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute the Tennessee Department of Agricultural Lease Agreement and memo of understanding relative to the fire department brush truck lease.
Again, Mayor and Council, we, well, we rent, we lease a truck from the state agriculture department, which is our brush truck, and they're updating their agreements. And so what we have brought to you this evening is an updated lease agreement as well as memo of understanding for mutual aid, and we would again ask the council to give permission for the mayor to sign.
Any questions for chief on this? Now we'll move on to item nine, which is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute a renewal contract with Anderson Yards relative to the mowing for the building safety department. Steve?
Good evening. Yes, this is the same vendor we've used the last several years. I believe this is the last year that we can extend this contract. They've done a very good job. They're probably one of the best vendors we've ever had to do this for us. So I ask that we extend this one additional year.
Questions for Steve on this? Okay, thanks, Steve. We will move on to item 10, which is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute a contract with the Tennessee Department of Transportation relative to the right-of-way maintenance of state highways. Tom?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This is our annual contract with TDOT where we, we get to bill them for any of the work we do as far as mowing, litter control, striping, patching, any of the state roads. Also, it pays us back for salting and plowing the roads as well. The contract's a little over 200, maximum a little over $212,000.
Questions for Tom on this? Okay, we'll move on to item 11, which is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute a renewal contract with Sweeping Corporation of America relative to the street sweeping.
Thanks. This is to extend our existing contract with Sweeping Corp. of America for our first extension on it for one year.
Questions for Tom on street sweeping?
Just a quick question, Tom. Is that random? How does that, how does that service work?
They have a route, they, they do all the state, state routes because we do get reimbursed for those. They also do some of the other major collector roads, such as Rock Springs Road, part of Rocky Fork Road, Old Nashville Highway as well.
They're just kind of running a cycle then?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
Tom, did you tell me 12 or 13 was the one we were?
Thirteen.
Okay. So move on to item 12, which is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute a renewal contract with Rollins Excavating Company, LLC, relative to the concrete work for the public works department.
Thanks. This is to extend, it's a first one-year extension with Rollins for any concrete work they do for us, sidewalks, curb repair, driveway repair, that sort of thing.
Questions for Tom on this item? Okay, item 13, we are going to pull from the agenda, and we'll move on to item 14, which is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute a contract with Hawkins relative to the water treatment plant for citric acid 50%. It's a lot less to have to read this time.
Yes, it is. Did well, right?
Oh, you did.
Yes, ma'am. This is, citric acid is what we use for cleaning membrane filters, and this would be an annual contract we have with them. The low bidder was rejected, so citric, or Hawkins was next in line.
Questions for Mike on the citric acid? Okay, we'll move on to 15, which is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute a renewal contract with J and B Tanker Incorporated relative to the lime sludge removal from lagoons at the water treatment plant.
Yes, this is an extension. This will be the third and final year. They'll be doing the South Lagoon at the water plant this year.
Questions for Mike on sludge removal? We'll move on to item 16, which is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute a renewal contract with Bush Construction relative to the installation of gas mains and services.
Again, this is a renewal. I think this is the third year, so this will be the last year, and Bush has done a phenomenal job in helping us kind of maintain and not get so far behind during this heavy construction phase.
Questions for Mike on this item? And we'll move on to 17, which is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute a renewal contract with Dan Weaver Service relative to the water leak survey.
Yes, ma'am. This is, will be the third and final year again before we have to re-bid. Mr. Weaver comes in and helps us find leaks that are very difficult to pinpoint and break down, so he's done a really good job at that also.
Okay. Questions for Mike on this? It's amazing how they do that.
Could you use them like a fork stick or something?
That's it. That's exactly it. We'll move on to 18. Next time he comes out, let Steve know. He can come out and watch.
Yeah, come watch.
Item 18 is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute a contract with American Development Corporation for Water Treatment Plant Sodium Orthophosphate Aqua Mag.
Yes, ma'am. You guys previously approved Univar for this bid, but Univar had to pull their bid because they were not authorized to sell this product in Tennessee by the manufacturer, so we went to the next bidder on the list, which was ADC.
Okay. Questions for Mike on this? Then we'll move on to item 19, which is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute contracts with the following relative to gas, water, and sewer materials: water and sewer, core and main, national meter automation, southern pipe, haze pipe, GNC supply, and Fortoline from the gas department, Carrot Test, Equipment Controls, GNC Supply, Honeywell, Elster American Meter, Honeywell Mercury Instruments, CGS, and Expirate Tech.
Yes, ma'am. This is our annual bid of materials and meters for the gas and water sewer departments.
Questions for Mike on this? Move on to item 20, which is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute a performance agreement with Bad Dog Band, Style Sound, relative to the music for food trucks and fun event at the event center.
Is that your band, Mike?
It is not my band. Not at all. Thank you, Mayor and Council. We've kind of changed our summer music series to a couple of themed events, and this has been one of them, the Food Trucks and Fun Event, and staff is coordinated with Style Sound and Bad Dog Band to present the music for that event on June 15th and to be held at the event center. The cost is $1,000, and we're, we'll provide the stage like we have in the past. They've got a couple more band members. We wanted to try to get a good band for this and also a nice stage with lighting, so that's kind of why it's a little bit more expensive than in the past. It's also a four-hour stint that they'll be playing, so it's a little bit longer than the 6:30 to 8:30 that we used to have, or 6:30 to 9:00. So should be a good event. Right now, I think Marty's got 10 or 12 food vendors down there, and hopefully get good weather for the event.
Questions for Mike? Then we will put the contract for Bad Dog on the agenda, and move on to item 21, which is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute a renewal contract with Golf Now relative to the golf course tee time reservation system and software.
Yes, ma'am, Mayor and Council. If you recall, our original contract with Golf Now was for one year. It expires June 30th. We're very happy with the services that they provide, and we would like to renew it for two years.
Great. Questions for Hallen on this?
Are we seeing an increase in bookings and plays?
Not necessarily. It's really been more a convenience to the customer. We're, right now, we're running 28.7% is booking online, but 16, 17% of that is through our website. Through Golf Now is only 12%. So of the, it looks like it's going to be somewhere around 20,000 rounds, projecting 28% of that is booking online. It's really more of a convenience. We are getting people that are doing the hot deal at 12 and 1208 that are coming back. Not as much as we'd like for them to, but it's really, the convenience is great.
And equipment, has it been? The equipment that we've got?
Well, it's all our own equipment. It's their software. Yes, flawless. We haven't had a problem with it at all. Staff loves it.
Good.
It cut their closeout time by two-thirds.
Wow.
Because the reports and stuff you can generate through their software.
I think there's a value right there.
Yeah, oh yeah, absolutely.
The convenience can't be underestimated. I mean, it was, I know that there were times that I elected to go play somewhere else, couldn't call when the golf course was open. Now you can book 24/7. So if it's the middle of the evening and you're talking to a friend about golf, you can go ahead and book a tee time for tomorrow even if the golf course is closed. And there were several times that that came up when I was trying to book courses.
Yeah. One of the other things that they provide is a marketing or a social media person in Orlando, his name's David Kurt, and he will post to Facebook, Twitter, does Facebook posts, website posts, probably five to seven times our accounts on our Facebook page has gone up dramatically.
Great.
Do you have any no-shows that book online?
No, sir.
Is there?
They'll, they'll, they can cancel it on their phone.
Okay.
We will move on to item 22, which is appointment of two board members to the Board of Directors for the Limeball Library, Limeball Public Library, to serve three-year terms. If you will remember with the new things that were set by the legislature, we will now be appointing two board members to the Limeball Library Board to represent us, and we've set this up just like we do for our other boards. If someone's interested in serving, they can go online and submit an application. So if you're interested in serving on the Limeball Library Board, if you will go online to the town Smyrna website, you can sign up. We'll move on to item 23, which is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute an employment agreement for the town manager with Brian Hercules. Jeff, do you want to take this?
Yes, Mayor and Council, as you were, town manager with the town has an employment agreement. This is standard. You have presented before you there the employment agreement that I have put together in speaking with Mr. Hercules and through Human Resources. Believe that Jeff has met with Mr. Hercules, and he's fulfilled all of the background that was required, so we're ready to move forward with the agreement.
Great. To give the public an idea, second week in May, was it second week in May that we all got together? The process closed, and we had over 90 applicants that had applied for the position, and Jeff Craig put those in somewhat of an order for us, and we then took those applications and were able to review all of them. We each gave our top five to seven to Jeff Craig, and Jeff then ranked those individuals. We ended up interviewing five, five people, and it was a unanimous decision to hire Mr. Hercules. And we're excited about Brian coming on board. I did send an email out to all employees prior to letting the media know. We felt like it was very important that our employees knew first, because I will tell you, during that process, that's one of the things that each one of us focused on was how is this individual going to fit in with the team, and how is this individual going to work with our employees? And we felt like Brian would do a great job at that, so we're excited about him coming on board, and he'll be starting July 1, and Mr. Gill will be here through the end of August, and so they'll have 60 days to work together, which I think will be a real benefit for, for this organization. He can share how things work with the system, and Brian can get familiar with the town and with our directors and with the employees. I wanted to throw out to you guys, what I'd kind of like to see happen is that Brian come in, work with Mr. Gill, but also get out into each department and spend some time with, in each department for a couple of days, whether that's Mr. Gill and Brian work together for a week or so, and then he goes out in a department, or if it's all on the front end that he's in the departments. Do you all have a preference how you want that, or do you have a preference as to some of the things you'd like to see during those 60 days?
I think it's going to be invaluable to get out to the different departments and get a feel of not only our folks that are working there, but the policies and procedures there so that Brian has that, and he's up and running, and I would say it would be between these two guys how they work that schedule out.
Okay.
Well, it's not a duty for Mr. Hercules to meet a lot of the employees face to face, which is, you know, I think he wants to do that, and I think that's a great idea to get launched.
Right.
Now, we've, we've said that from the beginning, that our employees matter. It was one of the most important decisions in the process of how we went about making this hire, and so I know that Brian wants to get out there, and I think our employees will probably be excited to get to meet Brian and get to know him on that level before he actually takes the reins at the town, so.
I like the, I like the idea of letting Brian decide what Brian needs. The 60 days is really for Brian and for the staff that's staying. No disrespect to Harry, but he's leaving. So let Brian decide what he needs and make the right choice. I think we made the best possible option out of those 90 applicants. I can't, I can't think that there was any other way. It was, Brian's here today, and for those of you in the audience may not know that, but Brian's first opportunity we've had to address you, and I just want to tell you, you did a really good job through the interview process, and we're extremely excited about you coming on. I think you handled yourself well. There were several things you said that we have repeated amongst ourselves because it stuck with us, and I think it's important for the directors who are all sitting here to understand that he definitely has your best interest and the success of the, of the department at heart, and that came through in the interview very strongly. So I think, I trust Brian to make that decision, what he needs to do.
Great. I think it, also, just to kind of give those that don't know, Brian's background was with Atmos Energy for quite a number of years, and then with United Way of Rutherford and Cannon Counties, and then currently he's the economic development person for Rutherford County. So he comes with a wide variety of background and experience, and I think it's going to serve us well. So we look forward to you coming on board and being a part of the team, and I will tell you, that's a word we use a lot around here, is team, and I think we very much feel that way, and I think the employees feel that way, too. So we look forward to you all getting to know him. He's already said that he'll be at Simply Smyrna on Saturday, so hope the community will come out and get to know Brian and his wife, Pat. And I will tell you, everything that I've been involved with, with them, they come as a pair. So when you get one, you get the other. So we've got a great group in Brian and Pat. So any questions about the employment agreement? Okay, then we'll move on to item 24, which is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute a contract with Fuel Master relative to the gasoline tank maintenance. Rex?
The town dispenses gasoline and diesel at three locations in the town. The staff recommends an annual contract for standard maintenance, software updates, and technical support. The price for this contract is $3,825. Our one-year warranty period has expired, and now we need this support.
Questions for Rex on this? Okay. We will put that on the agenda. I did not notice, was there anything under other tonight?
Yeah, Jeff Craig, yes.
Okay.
You've got before you just our classification and compensation plan, which we include every year when the budget's presented. It is a representation of all of our pay grades and positions within the town, and you've got that for your approval.
Questions for Jeff on this? I know every year that you look at the pay and all that. When, when is it going to be time for us to come back and really?
So the last time we did a full-scale, I believe, was in 2015, so sometime in the next probably two years. We go to a full-scale every, every five years. I do each year look at a salary study and look at our pay grades to be sure they're still in line with the market, and we do strive to have a, you know, a market approach where we're paying the market average or better for our positions, and I'm pleased to say that we're still in a really good position this year as well, so.
Great. Questions for Jeff on this?
No, I was just going to add, you know, from the standpoint of the benefits that our employees have, too, I'm sure you factor all that in as well when you do your pay studies. It's a great program for them, and I hear that a lot. I know they appreciate it.
Okay. Anything else under other before we move on? Okay, then we will start with Mike Moss on Director's Report.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Just a couple of items. I know you all will hit on some of the upcoming events. Just to let you know, Rotary Soccer Park, I know it was in my report, but we were able to get those new fields sprigged before all the rain hit, which was the goal. So Friday, staff worked hard to get that done, get irrigation done, so we're excited about that, and hopefully getting some fields growing in over the summer into the fall. Also, we've gotten going on the Jefferson Springs Greenway Extension. We've kind of started in Jefferson Springs rec area, coming back towards Sharp Springs Park, concentrating on the, the upper parking lot there and expanding that. I did receive a contract extension from TDOT today, just expanded the date through next year since it's going to be a year-long contract, so with Mr. Gill's approval, I'll bring that to the next meeting, especially just a date. Especially just a date change. For y'all to know, Simply Smyrna Celebration is this weekend from 5:00 to 10:00 down on Front Street in the Depot District. And I think they're going to shut down the road at 3:30. Right now, it's 55 vendors to date. We also have a baseball tournament this weekend, 50 teams just playing at Todd Lane and Lee Vicry Park. So just be aware of the, a lot of people in town for that. Obviously, we opened up the pools this past weekend. And despite some of the rain, we still had really good crowds. It's been light this week just because of the rain, but there's still been people down there. Cedarstone Park is out to bid. Bid opens on June 19. We have a pre-bid meeting June 7, which is next Thursday. So hopefully, we'll get some good bids on that and at least get some interest. I know all the contractors I've talked to are very busy. So that's why we gave them four to five weeks to bid on the project. Also, Nolan Drive, we'll move into the easement phase on that. I've talked to the airport already about presenting at one of their meetings. I know they meet the second Wednesday of each month. We do have 100% plans, construction plans on that. We'll have to get an easement from the folks that own Kmart, the old Kmart, and then the airport authorities, since that's a public road going through that leased property. And that is it.
Questions for Mike? Okay, Tom?
Thank you. I talked to TDOT the other day about the CMAC grant that we're paying for, working on for the Old Nashville Highway, Sam Ridley intersection, and getting some revised numbers. They did not want to pay for any additional capacity, any widening of the roads, but they're just going to pay for the turn lane improvements to that intersection. Also, talked to TDOT. They said in about one to two weeks, we should expect a notice to proceed for construction plan, for construction phase for the Sam Ridley-Stonecrest Intersection Improvement Project with the ITS Phase 1 and 2 project. United Communications has already moved their wires out of the way in preparation for some of the fiber optics to go in on that project. Milton's Electric is the next utility to move. They're the only two utilities involved in that project. So once they move and we get, all the smittles have been made to TDOT. So once we get a notice to proceed to construction on that project, we should be able to get moving forward on that. Hopefully, in the next, hopefully get a notice to proceed in the next three, three, four months on that project. The Weekly Swan Intersection Project, we've made all smittles to TDOT as well. And again, waiting hopefully in the next three or four months to get a notice to proceed to construction phase. Ena Springs West Extension, we've sent all the plans out to the utilities for them to mark up to figure out where their existing utilities need to move and where new utilities are going to be located on that project. We submitted the construction plans to them a couple of months ago. So we're trying to finalize those plans as soon as possible.
Questions for Tom?
Tom and I, along with some others, went down to TDOT today to have discussion about Sam Ridley Parkway. We had talked about in the retreat that it was going from, based on the money, it was going from 24 to Wolverine. We were asking for just under a million dollars more from TDOT. And they have agreed to provide that amount of money. They also agreed to curb and gutter the entire way. And we feel like if things stay on track, that we hopefully will be moving dirt around this time next year.
Now, what are we in June, July?
Yeah, around summer, sorry, next year.
So we got really good news. We really appreciate TDOT continuing to work with us. They had already done the $2 million match plus the million dollars additional. And now they're adding on another million. So we're looking at, to come up to about 4.3 million was about what it was. Was that what Whitney said?
For the additional portion?
With the additional?
Yeah, the additional portion was about 4.3 total, about 9.5 million for the whole project.
The whole project. So we need to make sure that if you see somebody from TDOT, you let them know how much we appreciate them stepping up to help us. That's going to be a huge project, and it's going to be the gateway into our community. So I think it's going to be something very positive for the town. And we just ask that citizens be patient once it starts. I know sometimes it's a headache. It has been with Sam Ridley being torn up here and Lowry Street. So just be patient, it will, it will get better. So anything else to add from that?
No, I think that's it.
That's it, okay.
Do we know when they're going to pave Lowry?
I know the rain has slowed them up significantly. They were planning to start about a week and a half ago. So I guess once, I know they're not going to be paving tonight, but the way the rain holds up, hopefully, they'll be able to get back on it in the next week or so. You know, they're starting from Smyrna end and working north toward Nashville. So they'll get through our area a lot quicker. Hopefully, in the next two, three weeks, they'll be out of Smyrna.
I noticed the milling stops, oh, where is it? In front of Old Fire Hall, somewhere in that area. And it picks up on the other side of town. Is there a reason that they're, skip that area?
Uh, we, they kind of, we, along with the downtown Lowry Street project, we're going to be adding all the sidewalks and everything. Part of that, we're going to be adding some lighting, street lighting on each side. At the time, we were thinking about, we were working with Milton's Electric, thinking that we had to run wire power under Lowry Street, so we'd have to cut it. We didn't want to cut it after they had already paved it. So we asked them to hold up on that portion for a little bit until we figured everything out with them. Turned out with Milton's Electric, we don't have to cut the road, which is a significant cost savings to the town. And so now they're just in the process of waiting to come back and mill that portion down.
And that project is where now, or what phase is it in?
Oh, that's, Kevin Reese, Kevin Reese is running that project. But what I remember, we're discussing utilities right now, getting all the utility certifications together. And I believe he has made all the smittles to TDOT to move into construction phase.
Thank you, sir.
Anything else for Tom?
What date do you think Weekly Swan will start, will begin?
I'm hoping we can get construction, notice to proceed to construction phase in about four months. That could be eight. They've got every, they've got all the paperwork. It's just a matter of them getting it approved, sending it to FHWA, getting them approval, and then sending us the notice to proceed. All the additional money has been allocated for the project, so that's not holding anything up. It's just a waiting game.
Anything else for Tom? Okay, Steve?
Just two or three things. As I'm sure you remember, you've recently passed some ordinances that deal with car lots and also with banners. I've had some discussions with Mr. Gill. We've decided that we'd like to get full implementation of that, probably October 1st. Excuse me, August 1st, excuse me. So in this time between now and then, we'll be getting notices out to all the car owner, all of the car lot owners, as well as as many business owners in Smyrna to let them know that, you know, we have a bit of a change coming. So just letting you know that we'll be in contact with them, letting them know that things are going to be updating in a few months. Believe it or not, it's, it's already time for, for us, my department anyway, to be starting dealing with firework tents. I will mention really more to the, any listeners, I'll remind you that the fireworks tents can begin selling fireworks as early as June 20. However, again, to their, to our citizens, they cannot be fired or exploded, whatever the case may be, until July 3rd, 4th, and 5th. So I'm sure the police department will be like, glad to get that word out as well.
Steve, you'll be having them post that at the tents.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Okay, questions?
On the flags and banners ordinance?
I thought we had discussed July 1.
Well, we did. But again, there's a bit of communication, one thing that we wanted to accomplish. And then the other was to make sure we are logistically set up to put that into motion. That's going to be a whole new permit system. And we have, have to have a way to track what banners are currently legal and which ones are not. So it's going to take a little while to turn those wheels and get them into motion. And we really felt like pushing it off one more month would allow a good, a good beginning.
Yeah, let me piggyback his remarks. One of the things, and I didn't realize it, apparently, there are a ton of people that consider banner signs. It's going to take a lot of time to get around to those people with the correspondence that we'll send out, telling them August 1, this stuff's got to be mopped up. And we wanted to make sure pursuant to what y'all asked, I think one of the things you want to do is make sure that we didn't, we were reasonable with regards to giving them time to straighten up, which is what we tried to do. But there's, it's going to be a big challenge with these banners.
It is. There's a lot of banners in Smyrna.
Ton of banners.
What are the feather types classified as today? I know we firmly define them.
Today, they're considered a temporary sign, and they can have those. Any business can have up to five of those temporary.
I can't remember, does it, does it refer to when they become ragged or anything like that? Because I mean, there's some really ratty-looking feather signs around.
Certainly, the signed ordinance states that, you know, the signs have to be maintained and not in disrepair. So that's the kind of thing as well that we can, we can address as we're in contact with these businesses.
Other questions?
Yeah. Just a comment, thank you guys for getting on that. Because, you know, we've been hearing this, I know the council has for a long time, about our Lowry Street corridor, and it seems to be where most of it is. So thank you, Mr. Gill, for hitting that up and being proactive about that.
Anything else? If we see the date's going to be later than the August, will you let us know?
Absolutely, but I really don't envision it being later than that.
I think we put it in a written correspondence that we're hand-delivering to folks, right?
Yes, well, we're hand-delivering to the car lots, and then we're going to mail notices to the property owners, uh, business owners, I should say.
Is there anything we need to change, Jeff, since we had put July 1?
Well, it's just active July 1. If the town chooses to enforce it monthly, it'll be fine.
Okay. Okay, any other questions for Steve? Robert?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Information Services has been wrapping up the fiscal year. But in addition to the normal activities for that, we've been working on a few additional projects, such as the Newtown Manager and of course, the Jeff Cus Memorial, making preparations for that. Would also like to announce, we've brought on board a new software developer, and we're looking for some additional projects and excited to have the ball rolling there too. And that will be primarily for projects with other departments and taking care of things there.
Questions for Robert? Thanks, Robert. Jeff?
Mayor Council, just a few things from the HR Department. We are wrapping up all of our seasonal positions. The majority of those have been filled. So I know Sheppe has been very busy with a plethora of seasonal folks that we brought on board. So we're excited to have everybody working for us now. Second, we are doing some preliminary work on the merit pay notices that'll go out to all employees pending the budget being approved in June. So we'll hopefully have those ready to go out to employees very soon. And then thirdly, do you want to say that the United Way Golf Scramble that we had a few weeks ago was very successful? We raised close to $31,000 for our community. So I'm very proud, thankful for the committee that worked to organize that, all the people that came out and played, had over 28 teams and over 30 sponsors for the event. So had a beautiful day. It was hot, but no rain, so we call it success.
There were some really good teams out there too.
There were some great teams.
I still don't know who won.
We did.
That was my question, I was going to ask you who actually won.
I'll pass this to Rex.
I was going to ask, Mr. What, what place did y'all's team come in?
We came in, we almost were third.
Almost.
Yes.
Well, what, what place was my team?
I don't know, you lied.
We stacked.
You did, no, he lied, he lied on.
I think the last meeting, you, you said you were going to beat us. So I just wanted to clarify.
No, they cheated.
Well, you know, spiritually, we did.
Anything else about the golf tournament?
I don't know.
I will say, everybody has a great time, and it's for a great cause. And Steve does cheat, so if you like a team that cheats, then be on Steve's team.
I think it's two years in a row we placed. I don't think it's cheating.
But we did have a great time. We really appreciate the town, all that they, all the employees do to put into making it a successful event.
You know, one of the things that Jeff and I talked about today.
I sent, in what was it, 2015, we raised 17,000 for United Way. This year, we've raised, last year, we raised 43,000. We've over-tripled our contribution to United Way.
Some of that income was on the divots that we had to pay for.
There was a substantial build for Topsoil Field, some of y'all's dividends too.
That was from HG.
Speak for yourself.
Look at councilors sitting over there not saying a word.
Rex?
All right. April local sales tax collected $1,164,375. It gives us year-to-date under-budget of $114,372. April state share tax collected $521,620. Year-to-date, we're over-budget by $22,833. The auditors will arrive to start preliminary field work on June 11 for our comprehensive annual financial report. That's all I got.
Questions for Rex? Thanks, Rex. Mike?
Yes, ma'am. McKim and Creed are rolling along with the I&amp;I project. They are doing manhole cammering and videos. They have also started the cleaning of the lines, so everything's going well. If everything stays on schedule, should complete probably in August. And at that point, we will look to probably get some, apply for some CDBG grant funding to fund the construction, some of the construction phases. So we'll move on from there. The 4R Force Main.
On the other, have they given you any indication of how bad it looks?
We won't know anything until they start sending reports in. They haven't seen anything in yet, so.
I didn't know if they might have.
We'll get the full package and then the recommendations on repair. And that will rank the lines and the manholes from poor to very good.
So they didn't come up and say, Mike, it's looking real bad?
No, no, they have not, no. The 4R Force Main repair and replacement went really well. Taylor Farms and Bijon both worked with us fantastically with no issues on the tie-in. So that's out of the way and has been replaced, and we're good to go there.
Great. Any other questions for Mike?
The Taylor Farms pretreatment, I'm not hearing as many complaints about it. Does it seem to be in pretty good shape now?
They're working on it. The last meeting that Leland went and had with them, they had kind of figured out that they've got a heater that's inside the bio reactors. And when that foam caused by the bio reactors got up, it was knocking that heater out. So they started adding a defoamer to help that and also help it from running over and getting on the concrete pad out there, which created an odor. So they're, they're making progress. They're not quite there yet, but they are making progress. So we continue to meet with them and get progress updates. But they, they are moving step by step forward.
Any other questions for Mike? Mitch?
Mayor Council, we have Planning Commission next week, Thursday. We have a handful of items on the agenda. A rezoning at Colony at Green Tree, which is over at Ryan Hill Drive. Previously was approved for a PRD of 130 single-family lots, being reduced down to 11 larger lots. Three preliminary plats, one to take note of is Tully Farms being rezoned. It's changed names to Olive Branch, starting on that phase with 85 lots off Lee Road. We have four site plans as well, and then Rocky Fork Elementary School is on that list as well, so.
Great. Any questions? Glad to have you tonight. Al?
Yes, ma'am. We start our annual First Tee Summer Program on Monday. As of yesterday, we had 61 juniors signed up to go through, on our program. I want to let the public know that they can still call the golf shop. It's not too late to sign up. It's July, or June and July, Monday through Thursday, from 9:30 to 12:30. So if you'd like to sign up to that and call the golf shop. Our Ladies Invitational, we have one of the largest ladies invitationals every year, the 3rd Wednesday in May, and we held it two weeks ago. And one of the things that we're very proud of, and I know they're very proud of, is they always do it for a charity. They raise money with their event for a charity, just like United Way does for, or we do for United Way. In the, in years past, they've raised money for Wounded Warriors, Ronald McDonald's House. And this year, they raised $2,700 for the Rutherford County Animal Rescue Center.
Great.
So that was, they were really tickled. We'll be posting a picture on Facebook tomorrow.
Good.
Hal, I got a question. Can my team be part of the First Tee program?
You think at least, you're too old. I think at least two members of that team need to be.
I agree, Mark and Jeff need to, I agree, they need help.
I have my attorney present.
We'll give, we'll just give them encouragement.
Yes, we will, we will.
Just wanted to check, for those that might be in the audience curious to know.
We'll come on out one day, we'll hook you up.
Chief?
I'd like to add that the First Tee program is an excellent program. One of my sons went through it and it was excellent. Only thing I have to report this evening is our new apparatus will be arriving next week. It's on its way here from Wisconsin. We'll have factory training on it for three days, I think it's the 12th, 13th, and 14th. And hopefully have it in service by the end of June.
Great. Questions for Chief? Thanks, Chief. Ms. Diane?
My department's been working, State of Tennessee Department of Revenue has implemented a new business tax system. So we actually have to go on their site to enter our business license. So we've been doing training on that and hopefully we'll be up and running by the first of next week.
Great. Anything for Ms. Diane?
I hope that system's more user-friendly.
I know a lot of people that have business.
No comment.
I will say, it's gotten easier, but it's gotten easier, don't you think it's gotten easier?
They change it too often.
But when I first started it, it was awful.
Well, I agree, but I mean, you know, as soon as you get used to it, then they come in and they.
Then they change something.
They change some little aspect of it and I paid my twice last month.
Mr. Gill?
You know, my last job, I had the responsibility of hiring principals. And I'd always hoped Mr. Rakes would outlast me so I didn't have to hire his replacement, but that didn't happen. And hired Rick Powell to be the principal, I was invited the other day to come say a few words. And I was really impressed with the amount, the level of respect he had from his teachers. They spoke glowingly about him and, you know, Rick spent 45 years there and I was never more proud to have made that choice. So good luck to Rick in his retirement. Mitchell, you did a nice job. Aren't you a Yankee?
Yeah, more or less.
Good job. And when's Farmer's Market start, Mike? Next week, next Saturday. I want to encourage people, you may have said that, but I want to encourage people to patronize that Farmer's Market. It was really great in the beginning and it'll start our grade again, but we need to make sure we get in there and purchase from those guys so more vendors will come. So anyway, I encourage the public to do that and that's all I got.
Mr. Peach?
Obviously been busy with recodification, which we'll be speaking about later on this evening. I know that you're excited about that. And also, just want to mention, we've had a lot of open records requests, seems like lately. And Tiffany Lawson does a lot of work. She's our ombudsman for the town for gathering the open records. And obviously, the directors work with her to push out the information that citizens may, may desire and want for transparency. But it can become quite laborious at times and she does a really good job with that. I did not work festooning in.
Thanks, Jeff. Raquel?
Okay. We had observed the Memorial Day service here at the town on Monday, this past Monday. And I wanted to thank all of the staff that had, that participated in that. It was a nice turnout and I thank Chief Bill and his, you're not in trouble.
How do I get out of my chair, so?
That Chief Bill and his staff did a great job of taking care of that memorial service on Monday. Coming up, and Lori, you may talk about this more, the Taste of Smyrna, do you have that on your list?
It's actually been canceled.
Well, we won't have to talk about it then. Okay. And I know you're talking about the Kuss Memorial. I also want to mention that the Arts Commission is hosting the Smyrna Art Crawl. And it will be actually the Saturday afternoon, June the 9th. And it will be from 5 to 9 and it will be on Front Street, in the Assembly Hall, the Depot, and Carpe Artista, the 101, Front Street. So we would like for everyone to come out. We have artists from elementary all the way through adults and there will be different categories and different people will receive prizes. And citizens are requested to vote on their citizen's choice for the Arts Crawl.
Raquel, sorry, I didn't hear the date, when is it?
Next Saturday, June the 9th, from 5 to 9 on Front Street.
Great. Mr. Gill has one other thing?
Yes, I neglected to say that, I don't know, a couple of weeks ago, the chief came to me and we had an emergency purchase we had to make. We had a diesel engine that was blown and, and couldn't be replaced. The amount was $53,000 to replace that engine. And I don't know that it's necessary that the council vote on it, but Jeff seems to think it might be.
We'll bring it, just at the next council meeting.
We'll put it on the next council meeting.
Great. HG?
Spring's definitely here. I mean, all of these events going on, one right after the other. This Saturday is Simply Smyrna, it's an event sponsored by Carpe Cafe. I think they have four or five musical stages and vendors set up and it will be a very good time. And other than that, I don't have anything, thank you.
It's from 5 to 10?
5 to 10.
You know, it wasn't too long ago that we weren't able to do that, but with a focus on the Depot District. You know, really spotsight, spotlights our town and brings our citizens together. And I mean, you know, it's a small town, you feel like you're there with family. So again, for all that were involved in that, thank you. Again, to our veterans and families, thank you for your service, thank you what you've done for our country. Thank you's probably never enough, but you know, I just want you to know from the bottom of my heart how much I appreciate everything.
Steve?
I'm sure most of the events have been mentioned and there's some you're gonna mention, but there's one Saturday, this Saturday, June 2nd, 10 a.m. This is, Saturday is the actual two-year memoriam of Captain Jeff Kuss's crash. And so at the crash site, there will be a replaying ceremony at Sam Davis Home on June 2nd at 10 a.m. So for those of you that might want to participate. I appreciate all of those families that have sacrificed for us. Memorial Day is about those families and I appreciate that sacrifice, including the Kuss family. I would ask that you continue to remember my son, who's in boot camp going through training. He has right at 30 days left. He's doing well. Very proud to say that he qualified expert on the rifle range last week, company high score and platoon high score. So I sent him a letter and told him that it must have been genetics. But he, he is doing well. He, he finishes his actual training in two weeks and will officially be awarded his Eagle Globe and Anchor and the title of Marine on June 16th. So the next two weeks are probably the busiest and the toughest time for him. So just keep him in mind and the other several thousand recruits that are on Paris Island right now. That's all.
Lori?
So I do have an announcement to make this evening. And with that, it's been my pleasure to serve on the Town Council here in Smyrna, representing all of the citizens out in the community, the supporters that I've had. I have appreciated it greatly. Won't say that it's always been easy, especially in the beginning. Yeah, I got a lot of gray hair now, just can't see it. But with, with that being said, really, it was at the last election in November of 16 that my youngest daughter had to actually take me to Vanderbilt where they kept me, wouldn't let me leave for a couple of days. My blood pressure got down to about 80 over 40 and it was just stressful, stressful. And since that time, you know, the Lord spoke to me and was like, just peace, peace, peace. And so I've been pretty peaceful. I don't feel like I have represented the people who put me in this position very well, though. But with that being said, I do want to make it known that it's effective immediately that I am resigning from the council. But one good thing about the budget, I know we talked about the budget a little while ago. One good thing about the budget is in it, there's a huge pay increase for the Town Council position. It's going from 400 to $1,000 a month, plus the insurance. And I know that the insurance is really good. I don't particularly have it, but it's better than Nissan, so I hear from Steve. So that's great. I know that the mayor's position, the salary's increasing too. Ours is going from 400 to $1,000 a month. And I think Mary Esther, 600 to 1,600 maybe? I don't know. But so encourage everyone, anyone who's interested. I know that the council will probably fill this seat, but for the election that's coming up in November, you do have until August the 16th to turn in those qualified papers with only 25 signatures. We will be leaving the area even and I've taken another position. But again, thank you for allowing me this, this opportunity to serve.
Lori, I'll tell you, you've kind of caught us all off guard, we didn't know. And I have enjoyed serving with you. You've done a great job, not only here on the council, but with all of the organizations you're involved in, whether it's Lions Club or Rotary or Motlow or everything you're involved in. So you have definitely left your mark on this community and I appreciate all that you've done and I've enjoyed serving with you. So good luck to you and your family.
Thank you.
Wherever it takes you and I'm sure whatever community you'll be moving to, they're very lucky to have you.
Thanks.
I feel the need to interject here also. I mean, Lori and I served on Simon's Board for a number of years and she did a terrific job there. And you know, this job is not always an easy job and it takes a little time to get used to it and to, to feel comfortable in, in, in being a council person. And you grew into the job very well. I'm, I'm really, I'm just taken aback by the, the fact that you're doing that. But I think you were becoming a very good council person. And then not only what you did in Simon's appreciated, but all the other events. I mean, your work with Motlow, I just, I stand back in awe and watch what you do with Motlow and, and I'm very appreciative of that also.
Thank you.
So thank you for your service.
You're welcome, thank you.
Okay, you're next.
Okay, I was gonna let you call on me in case somebody else wanted to say anything before we did. But Lori, I'm shocked, first of all. And you said something right there that I totally disagree with. And you said, "I haven't represented those people that put me in office very well." I can tell you, you have. I can concur that you have, you've done an amazing job. And you've done that with respect and integrity. And so I wish you all the best. We personally hate to see you go. I've known you for a long time and I know who you are and, but I get it. Because that this, for the public's perception, this is kind of a thankless thing, but we all do it because we love our community. That's really why we do it. It's not about money or anything else, because let's face it, that's not really been that right, so. So I just want to say that to you and I'll, I'll talk to you more. Brian, welcome, I know you're in the audience tonight. Thank you for coming to listen to the meeting. Mr. Gill, thank you. We had a little session before this session, we've got a session after this session. But during this session, I want to say to you, thank you again. We had a little meeting, we have to, part of what we do is evaluate our Town Manager position. So Mr. Gill, there's a litany of items that you've accomplished here. And I don't have time to read them all or name them all, but there's a lot more than we even expected that got done. So I really appreciate that of you and for the council and these people here for making that happen. Because these, these people here, we talked about the empowerment that you give to your directors and we appreciate that you did that and we're seeing the results of that. So thank you for that. Had a little fun the other night at the Senior Center. I just had fun at the Senior Center, I just want to mention that. I'm not sure after I left if I am or not. But we, we had a little committee meeting there that got some community people together and just, they're looking at rebranding and coming up with some fresh ideas for the center and I got invited. And so Fran and the team out there, they're, they're a barrel of fun. Those people are a lot of fun, I'll tell you what. There was no food, except maybe a cookie, and I had not had supper. So Fran, next time you have a meeting, make sure we have food there, because seniors can cook, they're good. I do want to say what Tim mentioned and some of the others, I mentioned this in my prayer this, this, just a little while ago, about Memorial Day and what it truly means. And I think a lot of times we hear happy Memorial Day and it's a tongue-in-cheek kind of thing, we mean well by it. But Memorial Day means a lot more than just being happy. There's a, a lot of people sacrifice their, their lives and their families sacrifice lives for the freedoms we have to do this. And so Steve, to your son, I texted you the other day and I told you I was thinking of him. So it means a lot to me for anybody that's willing to stand up, put on a uniform and fight for our country or serve the country in some way. It's an ultimate sacrifice that none of us probably personally truly understand the meaning of. So unless you've lost a loved one in battle, you may not understand that, so. And lastly, I want to say thank you to our teachers, because school is out. Harry, you know all about this because you were a principal, but our teachers, Mary Esther, you were a teacher. So they do a great service to our community, guys. They give so much of themselves to help our children, to educate our children, halfway raise our kids while they're there all day long. And so they're out for summer, congratulations, fall is upon you, you got a couple of months. But thank you, thank you, thank you to all those in the school board and the school system that do that for a job. And with that, I want to mention Shannon again. I know Lori and I have talked about this before, but Shannon Williams is still battling brain cancer. She's a well-favored teacher at Smyrna High School and, and we want to continue to keep her lifted up in our prayers and our thoughts as she's fighting this pretty radical disease. So that's all I have, so thank you.
I'll tell you, teachers are already in my store, nail, starting to plan for next season. And kind of piggyback on that, it's really sad to see how much money teachers have to spend out of their own pocket to just do the day-to-day things. So they definitely have a thankless job and, but they always want to go the extra mile for the kids in their classrooms. So I agree, we do owe them a debt of gratitude. Couple of upcoming events, we've already mentioned Simply Smyrna, Saturday night from 5 to 10 on Front Street, fun for the whole family, stages of music, jazz, hip-hop, country, Christian, rock and roll. There will be a Kid Zone, they'll have vendors with food and crafts and arts. And there'll also be a wine tasting. Then reminder that tomorrow, our plane will be put in place. There will be a little bit of a road closure there on one of the lanes. We are expecting it to be somewhere between 9 and 10 a.m. and will probably take place till 2 p.m. So we invite you to come out and watch. We will be doing some Facebook Live from the town's website for that event. Then, the Captain Kuss Dedication will take place Saturday, June the 9th at 10 a.m. We encourage you to wear something patriotic. We also have Captain Kuss Memorial T-shirts for sale. And the T-shirts are $15 for sizes up to 2X. 2X and 3X are $20. And we have magnets for your cars for $5. And we have decals for the back windshield for $3. We are expecting quite a few people, so we encourage people to make sure that you're on time. We are gonna have a flyover from Captain Kuss's old Marine unit, Marine Fighter Attack Squadron 312. So we will have to get started right on time. We also will have limited seating, so we encourage you to bring your blankets or your lawn chairs. There will be parking in Lee Victory Recreation Park. So, and once that fills up, we will have overflow parking that you will be directed to. But we have people from all over the country that are coming in for the event and it's something we're really excited about. Janet and Michael, his mom and dad, and his brother Eric and his wife Christina will all be here. So look forward to being able to show them how appreciative we are of them as well as to honor Captain Jeff Kuss. I think that's it for announcements. I do want to say something, just to let Dixon County know how sorry we are. They have gone through a lot here lately. The mayor from Dixon County sits on a couple of the boards I go to monthly and I know. The mayor from Dixon County sits on a couple of the boards I go to monthly and I know that they've really been struggling as a community, so please remember them in your thoughts and prayers. They've just had to deal with a lot, so. Anything else? Then if nothing else, we are adjourned.